I'm Theo.
And I'm Juliette.
And this is Apologies Accepted.
We offer an entertaining look at some of the big issues in history by examining public apologies of the famous and infamous.
We're looking at politicians, serial killers, actors, and you.
Send us a public apology you would like to make and we'll read it on the air and give you a chance to redeem yourself or just get some guilt off your shoulders.
We're here for you. Once a week, maybe more if you're really, really sorry. Hi, everybody.
This is Apologies Accepted, the podcast. And I'm not Theo.
Me, I am. Me, 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 me. I'm Theo, but I'm not Juliette.
Someone's gotta be Theo. And I'm glad it's you.
I'm glad it's me, too. The privilege is all mine.
Speaking of privilege, what's shaking bacon?
Well, last night I went to see Amy Schumer. Yes, that's right, world.
Oh.
I went to a 10:00 PM comedy concert. She was performing at the movie theater.
You must still be in your twenties.
I felt like I was a thousand years old, standing in line at 10:15 PM, saying things like, when are they gonna open the doors? This line's really long. It went for three blocks, right?
Wow. Where was it?
This place called the Moody Theater, which I don't know how many people it holds, but more than three blocks worth because we were in line by, at block three. And I'd say we were sort of in the middle of the line. So that was a surprise. People tried to talk to me while I was in line and I was not friendly. Whereas in my twenties, I would have been all like, oh my god, damn.
Friendly.
I wasn't. This lady came up to me, I will say, like, on a date with her husband. Why do I think it was her husband and they were on a date? I don't know. Right? That's just a story I had in my head. When she came over, she was walking down the street, came over, sort of nodded her head at me. She went straight to me.
Yeah.
There were three blocks worth of people that she could have gone to. But I was the one out of 3,000. And said, who are you in line for? I'm sorry, mommy. Who the fuck are you asking me? Who am I in line for? What? That's, I was so, I said, Amy Schumer. And she said, alright then. And left. And then James said to me, that was really aggressive. And I was like, you know, maybe. But I was real mad, and here's why. If she had said, is this the line for Amy Schumer? I wouldn't have said, yeah, moron. I would have been like, yeah, it is. It's a really long line and it goes on for, but who are you in line for is invasive to me.
Is it?
It is, right?
Okay.
What, what? Who are you in line? Who are all these people in line for? What is this line for? Right?
Yeah.
That, maybe I would have been more friendly. I also was just irked in general, right? The line had been long. We'd walk forever to find the back of the line. Blah, 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 the line.
It was practically midnight. You were exhausted.
Basically, I had walked across the Sahara Desert without water. It should have been relaxing on the couch in my pajamas, wondering when I'm gonna be going to bed at 10:00 PM on a Saturday.
Relaxing on the couch in your pajamas and not being there. I have got this outfit now that is basically like a kimono top and pants. And you can wear it for pajamas and you can wear it out. And I am going to live in it forever. I've got, I bought two of them and then I found some different ones online that are very similar and I bought two more. And it's just gonna be what I wear in for the rest of my life. So I can go out to see Amy Schumer at 10 o'clock at night if I want to, wearing this thing. And then it's just like, I'm like, my pajamas on my couch, except I'm at some club or bar or whatever.
Sign me up. I'm, if they have those for men, then totally, I, and that's sad. Why does it have to be gendered, right? But it's like, I know I cannot wear the clothes that you have just described out without getting scared.
You can wear a caftan, maybe.
I probably could. Probably should at this point. I'm lazy enough. And then I'll say like-
So how was Amy Schumer?
The Amy Schumer show was okay. It was a big heaping dose of mediocre. There were a couple of good segments in there that felt really polished and well-developed. And, I mean, she connected with the audience so great, right? But it feels like she's working on her next Netflix special, right? So, cool. I hope that last night's show was not the special because it just, it was real average, right? And she's kind of playing with her persona. What is she now that she's married and has kids, right? Or a child?
Oh, is she? I don't know.
And I, you know, I don't have that answer, other than she's sort of doing a, she's dipping into Kathy Griffin territory where she talks about other celebrities. Openly, sort of like behind the scenes, secret stuff. And then doing a little bit, not quite Joan Rivers, but there's a little bit of the unhappy housewife slash working professional, right? Or more Ali Wong, I'd say. And so, yeah, it was kind of like, you're clearly Amy Schumer. You're not imitating anybody, but
Right.
Your life is changing. You're working for that material and trying to figure out how to process things on stage. And not blow up your personal life in the midst of working through all this. So, yeah, I don't know. It was, it was fine. It, it was free. A friend gave me the ticket, so that was lovely. If I had paid for the tickets, I would have been like, really? Okay.
Would you go again if someone gave you tickets again?
No.
Really?
No. And, and the reason I wouldn't go again, I'm holding my finger up, right? Because it wasn't Amy Schumer being mediocre. I gave her a good, solid B, right?
Yeah.
I couldn't do it. So, yeah. But I wouldn't pay to watch it again.
Okay.
It's the audience. The audience talked non-stop while she-
Are you kidding me?
I am not kidding you. Now, the people were talking to Amy Schumer, right?
Oh, my god.
She would set up a joke.
That's invasive.
It, well, and I was not in the mood for people to be invasive. So, so, yeah, it just, the lady behind me kept like, trying to be funny too and saying things out loud and whatever, right?
Irritating.
And I don't even think that she'd had a few drinks because this just, I mean, what do I know? She could have been blotto, right? But this wasn't the crowd and wasn't the night for like, super drunk people. It's just, it's the theater. It's not a comedy club, right? So it's a 3,000-seat theater. It's where we saw, where I was forced to go see Duran Duran.
Uh huh, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah. And so, it's whatever. It was just a lot of people talking around me. And then we had this thing, because again, I just wasn't in the mood, where you had to lock your phone up in a bag.
Yeah, in a thing. Yeah. Hannah Gadsby does that, too.
And so, fine, cool, no problem there. Don't worry, Amy, I'm not gonna record your mediocre performance, put it out for the world to shame you. Oh, this is gonna tie nicely to our, our apology today. But so, we're in a row. The row holds maybe 40 seats, right? Blindingly dark. We got in late. There were probably, there weren't even probably, there were six open seats and they were all together, right?
Yeah.
And so, we're coming in, the show had already started. It wasn't Amy. It was one of her opening acts. We're getting into our seats and I'm just like, I can't see the seat numbers. And James is like, I can't see them either. We'll just sit down. And I was like, okay, you know, there's six seats and this is fine, right? If a party of four shows up and they all have to be together, we'll move, right? We'll do whatever we need to do.
Right.
And another couple comes in after us and they sit down in the other two seats. So basically, in this row of 40, there are now two seats that are open. And an usher comes a few minutes later. Eddie points to these two open seats and there's this other couple, two people, who are holding their tickets and they're having a discussion with the usher of, are, you know, is this the aisle? Are these our seats? Yes, the, well, I don't know that these are your seats. I think your seat numbers are those seats over there, right? So the lady comes up. Now, picture this, if you will. There are two open seats. They are to my left.
Yeah.
I am sitting in a seat and to my right is James and then 38 other people, basically.
Sure.
Right? And the lady says, excuse me, I think you're in our seats. And I said, oh, okay, no problem. And I got up and said to James, we're in their seats and we have to move over two seats.
Uh huh.
Right?
I know. That's ridiculous. They should just sit in the empty seats.
The two better seats, by the way, because those seats were closer to the aisle, which in my world is a better seat.
It's better.
You're gonna get out, right? And so then the lady's like, oh, well, I, I don't know. And we're standing up, having this conversation while the show is going on. So I am very conscious of the fact that I am in the way of about 100 people viewing the stage. Now, it's a comedy show, so you don't have to view the stage. You just have to hear what people are saying. What a long story. So, short version, she sat down in the seat and then I was mad at her until she started laughing at the jokes in the right places. And then I was like, if I wasn't so mad at you, I probably would find you very charming. But I am mad at you that we had to have this conversation. Just stand in the fucking seat, lady. So, yes, not a good mood Saturday night.
That night.
Yeah. Anyway, enough about, that's, that's a lot of bacon. What's shaking bacon? You've been busy.
Oh, well, I went to Ashland, Oregon for the Shakespeare Festival, which was a blast. I like going up there and I like hanging out. And this is the first time we've been there, obviously, since the pandemic started. And we actually went, we went, we stayed in hotels. We actually went to dinner and it was really nice because the restaurants, because it was warm. It was like in the, in the eighties, maybe the lower eighties, not too hot. And the restaurants we went to had outdoor seating, so we got to sit outside, which was great. And it was also very pleasant. Like, one of the restaurants was set, was sat next to this little creek. And another restaurant had this beautiful outdoor area that was just really nice to sit in. And, and the food was good in all of the restaurants. So it was, it's the first time we've really been to restaurants since the pandemic started either, which is why I'm, I'm talking about it. Like, I've never been to a restaurant before. So, yeah. So, so we really enjoyed that. It was really fun getting to go back out to restaurants. And, and the plays were good. We saw The Tempest, which we left halfway through because I was, I know we did. It was the last play that we saw. We saw three plays. It was the last play that we saw. The play we saw before that was the day before, I think in the evening. And it was, it was kind of a bust. It was like, it was this play about this woman who was a slave. And there is another storyline with a woman who was a professor, a black woman who was a professor. And they were drawing parallels between, you know, what the experiences of the slave and the experiences of the professor. And it was all very racism 101. And I was just like, you know, I kinda-
Asheville, Ashland?
Asheville, Ashland, Ashland. Asheville's North Carolina.
I knew it started with Ash, but that might be needed. I recall they're 91% white.
So they probably need racism 101.
Yeah. That was probably very challenging for them.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying that I don't need racism 101 or anything like that. And I don't wanna be critical of a play by a black woman about racism or any of that sort of thing. But I was just hoping for a little more nuance from the play. And we went to a talk about the play beforehand because I wanted to see if we could learn even more about the play before we went. And it was really, really basic, the talk. It was just extremely basic and kind of cringey, actually. So I was, I was sorry that I bought tickets to that play. But, I mean, what can I say? I'm a white woman and I really shouldn't be criticizing this stuff. I should be supporting it. So, bad me. And the other person that we saw-
Arguable, but go on.
Was King John, which was performed by, by women and non-binary folks. So, you know, in all the male roles, there were women, which was very cool. And it was, it was good. I enjoyed it. I think it was the best of the plays that we saw. I don't know that I remember any of it, though. So it wasn't like, some of the years that we've gone, the plays have been really compelling and, and really absorbing. And the, you really get into it and you get into the language and you get into the whole experience of being in this play and, and the story is, is compelling. But I didn't really experience that with any of the plays this year. But I still enjoy going and I am going to go back next year. Even though next year they're doing Romeo and Juliet and Twelfth Night, which are two of my least favorite plays.
Absolutely. One of my favorite plays, Romeo and Juliet. Amazing.
Is it really?
Yes, absolutely.
Brett says I hate it because they stole my name, but-
Yes, they time-traveled.
I mean, after, after 57 years of being asked, where's Romeo? When you introduce yourself to someone, you kind of get sick of the whole thing. But I, I should give it another chance.
Juliette is an amazing character, given that this is early in his career. He gives a lot of agency to her. She's the only character who progresses and develops throughout the play. Everybody else remains kind of static. She's really the heroine, or the hero. She's really the hero in the play. Everybody is sort of an appendage to her, arguably, in a way, right?
Right.
And so, it's Romeo that is pitiful and it is Juliette who really actually has all of the power and makes decisions, et cetera. And so, yeah, love, love Romeo and Juliette.
All right. I'll give it another chance next year.
You must. I demand you love it, too. I demand.
I promise. So that was a fun trip. I really enjoyed it. And we're going to Death Valley for Thanksgiving, which is also exciting. Although there will be no plays, it should be very, very pretty, very beautiful. So, have you been to Death Valley?
No, I have not been to Death Valley. I wasn't sure if it was in California or Arizona, and I now know it's California. Because I asked you and you were like, California, moron.
Dumbass, yeah.
And now, how far is it from Palm Springs?
It's about, from Palm Springs? Oh, I don't know. A ways. It's sort of northeast. So it's, it's not really that close to Palm Springs. But I don't know. If you get a chance, you should go. I think it's, it's awesome. But I mean, there's not, there's not really, there's a hotel there that's supposed to be nice, but I bet it's, you know, not that nice. And, and that's, there's a couple motels and really there's nothing there except to enjoy the landscape, which I'm not sure you're really into that kind of thing. So.
It, I mean, it depends. I love the desert. I love the landscape.
Barrel.
But yeah, I do need, I need shopping. I need bars. I need restaurants.
Stores or bars or restaurants, yeah. I'm really kind of low on those things. So not, I'm not much in the way of high life. But, but I'll take pictures and I'll send them to you. So it'll be just like you were there.
That's all I need.
So speaking of traveling and seeing things and doing things, so Los Angeles is a place we've all been to.
Fight for that segue. I'm gonna build it somehow.
The Los Angeles City Council. So I know you're asking yourselves, what does the Los Angeles City Council do, right? Well, Los Angeles City Council members are in charge of creating all the laws that legislate how civilians and businesses operate, as well as overseeing and giving final approval on budgets for the city of Los Angeles. And within their own district, council members have significant power, especially over how and which development projects are approved. So it's no small thing. It's not like some cities where the city council is just, you know, mostly just, what's the word?
Window dressing? Window dressing or?
Yeah, that'll do.
Figurehead, like the Queen of England?
Figureheads, yeah. So, within the city council of Los Angeles, there's a council president whose influence allegedly rivals that of the mayor. I don't know how influential the mayor is in Los Angeles. I should have looked that up, but probably fairly influential. So you hear a lot about the mayor.
He gets a lot of press.
About the city council president. So anyways, so her, her, her role is important. And the presidency is decided by a vote of all the council members. Nuri Martinez became council president in 2019. And just as an FYI, she makes about $300,000 in total compensation, which is 476% higher than the average council member salary and 141% higher than the average Los Angeles salary.
That's got a lot of zeros behind it.
Yeah, significant, significant money we're talking. So why are we talking about the LA City Council? Well, I'll tell you. On November 9th, 2022, an audio recording from 2021 of a conversation involving City Council President Nuri Martinez and her fellow council members Gil Sadio and Kevin DeLeon and Los Angeles County Federation of Labor President Ron Herrera regarding redistricting was leaked anonymously onto Reddit. In this meeting, according to the conversation, Martinez stated, referring to District Attorney George Gascon, fuck that guy. He's with the blacks. Martinez also insulted fellow council member Mike, I think his name is Bonin. It could be Bonin. I don't know. But I'm gonna say Bonin because that's just the way I roll.
I like Bonin better than Bonin because he's gay and-
Oh, is he gay? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, Bonin is better. Let's say that. So Martinez insulted his black adopted child, saying, this kid needs a beat down. Let me take him around the corner. I'll bring him right back. Martinez also called the child a racial slur for a black person, meaning little monkey in Spanish.
I mean, I, it's just fucking shocking. And-
It really is.
Pray, continue.
Yeah, that's not all that she said. In the course of the discussion on redistricting, she commented, I see a lot of little, short, dark, little, short, dark people in Koreatown. Wahaquen Koreans, not even like Kevin, little ones. She then continued, I was like, I don't know what village they came from, how they got here, but whatever. She can also be heard to remark tanfeos, or they're so ugly, in Spanish. I'm like, man. The three city council members also discussed how to appoint a new council member who would work in their interests. And also, they agreed to gerrymander Nithya Raman's district in order to suppress those who had voted for her. They talked about bringing in Heather Hutt, who was a former California State Director for then Senator Kamala Harris. And Heather Hutt was actually later sworn in this year. I don't know why that part of this is not getting as much attention as the, the slurs because this gerrymandering is seriously important for Los Angeles. In addition, in the same leaked audio clips posted to Reddit, in which Martinez made racist remarks about black people in Wahaquens, she also made crude remarks about Jewish people and Armenians. So she's like hitting everybody. Martinez can be heard saying, the Jews, quote, "cut their deal with South LA." She was responding to former Los Angeles County Federation of Labor President Ron Herrera, who had said, I'm sure Katz and his crew have an agenda, referring to former state assembly member Richard Katz. Martinez said, they're gonna screw everybody else. So I think that's all she said, although that's more than enough.
I mean, basically, she insults Jews, gays, black people, indigenous people. Already, we're at half of Los Angeles.
Yeah, some Mexicans, some Korean people. She, she gets everyone. It's appalling. And she, she's Latina herself, right?
Right. Well, and also, this is where things start to become unfortunate. The first Latina president, and she's the second Latina on city council ever in the history of LA City Council, right? And so, it's so, it's-
It's just so disappointing.
Ugly. It's so ugly.
It is ugly.
Yeah. And, and it just, and it gets uglier the more you look at it, which we will do. Because, yeah.
We'll look at this more.
There's so fucking much here. And usually, sometimes with like, our stories, there are these fun rabbit trails to go down, like, oh, what's the history of turtles? Right? Or whatever, random, like, with this, it is just literally what happened.
Yeah. It's just a pile of shit that gives you plenty of, plenty of-
Everything. It's got Reddit. It's got Twitter. It's got racism. It's got homophobia. It's got antisemitism. It's got brown people versus black people. It's all everything. And I will proudly say that LA is the central flashpoint for everything. Everything in the world gets created there. And it starts in the West and moves east. All of our trends, all of our food, all of our everything. And so, the reckoning for how this plays out will show us the direction the United States will head in. Not tomorrow, not next year. It might be, you know, 10 years from now.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, I have a, I don't have a thousand. I have questions for you, right?
Okay.
But, yeah, okay, so, but I, I don't wanna step on your coattails.
No, I was just gonna talk about her apology and then I was gonna talk about sort of some of the rest of the story. But we can, we can do whatever you like.
Cool. Well, okay, so what we have here are three Latino politicians, actually four.
Right.
Three from city council. And then the fourth was a guy who's with the Federal Union of Labor, which is a, and I have, I've got the name wrong. But those are the words. Labor Union, Labor Federal Union?
Federation of Labor.
Thank you so much. It's important that I be exact. And, and they're talking about how to split the city up politically so that they benefit, right?
Right. And openly, they're openly talking about this, among other city council members.
It's a, oh, no, no. So this was a, this was a private meeting in the Federation of Labor's, I still heard it wrong, offices.
No, yeah, but there were, there were, there was more than one city council member there. It wasn't just Nuri. There was DeLeon and Sadio. So there, obviously, there's three people who know that they've got each other's backs on this racism bullshit, which is embarrassing.
Embarrassing and, and-
And the fact that Ron Herrera is there, the Federation of Labor President, going along with it.
And it, and it shows the backroom dealings in politics is, is what it does, right? And, and so, given, given all of that, right? I, I wonder if one of them had been Anglo, right?
Right, right.
Would they have gotten up and excused themselves from the conversation? Because you don't wanna tell people of other, people of color how they can or blah, right? Or, or would have, I, I just, okay, this might be racist of me, right? But, or maybe this is just my personal experience. We've covered so many stories about racism, right? That like, even before this, even before we ever started our podcast, if somebody said something racist around me, I would let them know that that doesn't make me comfortable. I, you know, let's not, right?
Yeah. I heard a good thing to say in that situation. It was something like, oh, I'm really not the person that you wanna be talking to about that. Which I think is a good thing to say. Yeah, I'm gonna use that from now on.
Oh, I will too, rather than, that language makes me uncomfortable, which is kind of what I usually say, like, you know, I, this makes me uncomfortable, let's not. But I am America's hero, so of course I'm always ever gonna do the right thing.
Of course.
But, you know, so it, like, I'm wondering, do you think that, that white people have learned a lesson about racism that maybe people of other, are you shaking your head no, which isn't working on audio?
No lessons about racism, apparently. But go ahead.
Well, yeah, I guess, I guess it is just racist of me to think, like, if a white per, I don't wanna say like, if a white, I imagine myself in that room, right? And then what I would have said and done. And I wouldn't have jumped up and said, you people are foul.
Thing. See, they know that nobody in that room is gonna argue with them. They know that nobody in that room is gonna be offended by their racism. That's the thing that's the worst to me.
And, and they did know they were being recorded because it was, though, they did not. It was-
I didn't think they did.
Yeah, it was a secret recording. And there's a whole thing about that, too.
Who recorded it?
Well, question number one, running around LA, the halls of politics in LA right now.
I see. Okay.
Is who recorded it. And I've got a little bit for you here. Let's take a quick look at a timeline. In 2013, so yes, we're going back a bit, Nuri Martinez, the daughter of immigrants, is elected to LA City Council. She is second after Gloria Molina as a Latina to serve on city council. So she's not a newbie to politics. In December of 2019, so she's been around for six years, she becomes the city council's first Latina president. Then on September 19th, this sort of gets to answering your question. This is the meat of who posted it? An anonymous user created a Reddit account called HonestFinding1581 and posted audio and some words in a popular forum under Reddit Los Angeles. And, and his greed, to use the word in this article, was titled, LA County Federation of Labor. When you hear it, it's unbelievable. The labor movement is in bed with City Hall. All you have to do is look close and listen to the recording I just received of the LA Fed president and Ron Herrera. Someone helped me connect the dots earlier this month. If Rick Caruso wins the mayor's race, he will clean house at City Hall, including making sure Nuri Martinez is out. So, this has been called an October surprise because elections- this has been called an October surprise because elections are coming up in November. City council seats are up, right? Mayor's up, right? Rick Caruso's been running, probably not gonna, let's hope he doesn't win. He's a big developer, owns a bunch of shopping centers. Yeah, I don't know that he's a billionaire. He's probably a billionaire, right?
Yeah.
And so, so an October surprise in politics is what happened to Hillary Clinton in her emails when she was running for president, right? And some people are saying that the Mar-a-Lago, that, but that didn't happen in October, but whatever, right? In politics, something happens, comes out in October that makes one candidate look really bad. And this one seems to be attacking, if you will, uh, Ron Herrera, who is, uh, or was, because he's now retired, the LA County Federation of Labor President. So anyway, this anonymous um, posting with the full hour and 20 minute long uh, audio recording gets posted on to Reddit. It does not get a lot of traction, not a lot. If it gets some views, but not, not a lot. And it's taken down a few hours later by Reddit moderators because it tained, it contained a bunch of unsense, unsourced claims and looked like a pro Caruso smear campaign. So Reddit took it down because they thought that this was uh, political shenanigans favoring uh, a mayoral candidate. HonestFinding reposted some of the audio clips on his profile. And three days later, he added um, an additional 15 minute clip of the most shocking parts, which included antisemitic and anti Armenian remarks. HonestFinding continued adding additional recordings over the next two weeks. So this was sitting on Reddit for about three weeks all, altogether, right? And HonestFinding is not posting them uh, in a discussion forum. He's posting these things on his profile page, right?
Right.
So the recordings sit around, again, don't get a lot of traction. And then on October 6th, someone creates a Twitter account called LA Union Laundry. And they posted a recording of Herrera, um, and they tagged several reporters and political accounts. On October 9th, the audio recording um, reveals that this meeting, these comments uh, were taken from an October 2021 conversation between Martinez, Herrera, Kevin Deleon and Gil Sadio. So it gets a little confusing, but last year, this conversation was had in this back room between these three LA city council members and the president of the Federation of Labor about how to divide the political lines in LA. And then, a year later, at the end of September, they get posts to Reddit, not a lot
Yeah.
of attention. And then it gets shouted out on Twitter, right?
Right.
And amplified.
Did the Twitter, the Twitter tweets get more attention than the initial Reddit posting?
Absolutely, because those tweets were directed to um, uh, writers, journalists of the LA Times and the New York Times and several others, right? Now, everybody in a position, um, anybody who has access to a megaphone, be it uh, I'll say podcaster, be it a podcaster, be it a journalist, be it a news anchor, you probably get tweeted and added all the time, right?
Yeah.
But still, regardless, uh, these tweets did catch uh, attention. Okay, so that's October 9th. October 10th, Martinez resigns her presidency role, but stays on the city council.
Yes.
Ron Herrera also resigns. Um, he resigns quietly. Let's see. And then October 11th, President Joe Biden, so this is, gets the attention of the White House. Right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
President Joe Biden calls for all those heard on the audio recording to resign and be held accountable for their behavior, calling the language used during the exchange unacceptable and appalling. Nuri Martinez announces she's taking a leave of absence from the council, but not stepping down permanently. Let's see. And I'll kind of stop there because I, I feel like more
Okay.
following, right?
Yeah.
But, but I do come back, I guess what it is, is I'd like to think that if um, if issues, if a discussion is racially charged, were happening um, with men, with other members from other races in the room, that somebody probably would have objected. So the, but yeah, I, will we ever get to anything with this? I don't know, but I think you're right that it's striking that all three were members of the same ethnic group and apparently felt comfortable enough to voice prejudices that they assumed were shared or knew were shared.
Or knew were shared. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So um, Martinez, well, after, so after this came out, um, she provided initially a statement in the LA Times apologizing. She said, in a moment of intense frustration and anger, I let the situation get the best of me. I hold myself accountable for these comments. For that, I am sorry. The context of this conversation was concern over the redistricting process and concern about the potential negative impact it might have on communities of color, she added. My work speaks for itself. I've worked hard to lead this city through its most difficult time. I don't know why it's LA's most difficult time. I don't think it is.
Post Cove, every, every year is LA's most difficult time.
Yeah, I mean, LA's been through a lot. I think there have been times to rival this time, but anyway.
Totally. Let's call it the riots, but fine. It's, it's difficult for her.
So um, Bonin's family replied in a tweet condemning the racist comments and demanding Martinez's resignation. And then the next day, um, Martinez stepped down as president through a release statement that apologized to Bonin and others, saying, effective immediately, I am resigning as president of the Los Angeles City Council, though she did not also resign from her seat on the city council, as you mentioned a moment ago. And another day after that, she, wait, she said she was taking a leave of absence, right? In a statement, she said, at this moment, I need to take a leave of absence and take some time to have an honest and heartfelt conversation with my family, my constituents and community leaders. I am so sorry to the residents of Council District Six, my colleagues and the city of Los Angeles. So she could have been forced to leave via a recall, a voter-led recall, but that's the only way she could have been forced to leave because rules for removal by other city council members would not apply in this particular situation. On October 11th, numerous calls for the three council persons to step down included that of President Joe Biden, uh, as well as a contentious city council meeting with a heated public comment session, uh, which combined to put additional pressure on Martinez. So she did resign her council seat the following day. So I think we're on October 12th by now. Um, as you mentioned, Joe Biden called for everybody's resignation. And um, on October 19th, in an interview with CBS Los Angeles, Kevin Deleon stated his adamant refusal to resign, claiming that his constituents need to be represented by him. He did not take responsibility for his own words as much as he did for his failure in not having put a stop to the conversation. And he attempted to spin his joke comparing Bonin's son to a handbag as having been more a joke about Martinez's penchant for luxury accessories than a racist joke at the child's expense. So I don't have the quote about the handbag, but I, I guess it.
So, um, oh, oh yeah, there's so many comments and every news article picks up different ones and it's real hard to like, find one all-inclusive. But um, let's see, yeah, basically, I can't find the actual quote, but what I can tell you is of the comments, uh, Martinez called Bonin a little bitch and.
Ooh.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, super fun. Um, I've never met him. Maybe it's accurate. Who knows?
Who knows?
Who knows? But, uh, but, so one of the um, counselors, and I forget which one, said, yeah, he treats that little boy uh, like an accessory. Like when Nuri brings her Louis Vuitton bag. Was the actual, actual quote. They mentioned Louis Vuitton.
I see.
So, um, so yeah. Yeah. But I mean, even beyond that.
So, yeah.
Fair enough to say somebody treats their kid like an accessory. I'm sure I have said things like that in the past too, right? Like, oh, they trot their child out whenever, blah, blah, blah. It, it's the dehumanizing language around uh, saying that the child uh, is being treated like a monkey or serves the purpose of a monkey. And she may have meant like a monkey organ grinder, but she didn't.
Yeah. And it's, it's, yeah, it's never good to make that kind of analogy.
You should never dehumanize somebody. Just full stop.
Yeah. Yeah. So Kevin Deleon said in an interview with Telemundo, I'd like to say that from the very bottom of my heart, my being that I offer an apology. I failed to stop it. I failed to stop the meeting. I failed to raise my voice and communicate in a direct way. He added that he would have to do the hard work to begin healing between various communities. What was said in that meeting, those are not my values, Deleon said. Those are not my principles. Deleon says that he recognizes his mistakes and offers an apology. He said he wanted to be part of the solution and repair the wounds. I have to do the hard work to repair the ties with my brothers and my sisters in our African-American community, Deleon said. He added that if a community called for an election, he would respect the people's decision. Bonin has stated that he was quote, really disappointed and sort of disgusted by what Deleon said in the interview. He went on to say that Deleon had left him a voicemail, which did not amount to an acceptable apology. And that other than that, Deleon has not spoken to Bonin since the recording was leaked.
And how could you?
Why would you?
Well, I mean, well, if you're the person who made the comments, you would because like, oh my God, I am so sorry about everything I said.
You would have to do that.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't call him and be like, apologize to me if I were the person that was insulted. I would be.
Oh, not at all. I'd never need to hear from you again, please. Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah. So after speaking one-on-one with several news outlets this week, in which he apologized for what he described as a failure of leadership, Deleon was asked if he hoped the interviews would help him to stay on as a council member. No, because this is ultimately, it's not about me, Deleon responded. And ultimately, it's about the voice of my constituent, constituents for Council District 14, a district that for decades, if not for generations, has been historically marginalized for a variety of reasons. If I were to step down, then they'd have no voice in City Hall. At that moment, you couldn't see it, but I had a very disparaging look on my face. But I should have verbalized my opposition to what was being said. I, I, I can't even with that. I, I can't even. It's, it's because he's like saying, I didn't say anything, but, but I looked disapproving. I, you know, I totally, you can't tell in the recording, but I was really unhappy.
You can't hear me rolling my eyes. Yes. And shooting disapproving looks at people.
And for him to say that if I were to step down, my constituents would have no voice. Like, there's not somebody else who's not a racist that could take your place.
I saw a record, um, an interview, it was a recorded interview is what I saw. Where um, a black journalist is interviewing Deleon, and this comes up, right? And Deleon does the political thing of kind of dodging and saying things like he just said, the statement he has said in several different interviews. I'm here to represent my district. They don't have a voice, blah, blah, blah. And the um, the news anchor says, there's no one else who can do this. And Deleon is like,
Yeah.
Well, you know, um, there needs to be a referendum, basically is, is what he says in paraphrasing, to vote Deleon out. And you could just see the look on that news anchor's face. It just doesn't buy any of it. Right?
Yeah.
And, yeah, so, yeah. However, Deleon has given everybody a roadmap for how to get rid of them. They just need to have a local community meeting and demand a revote or a vote, right?
Yeah, I recall. So hopefully that will happen. Um, I, I think he should, and, and I don't know about the other guy, Sadio? If he's resigning.
Lost in June to a, and here's the thing that gets me the most, right? These are progressive Democrats.
Yes.
Right? He lost to a more progressive Democrat. Um, and so, great. So he, um, his term ends in December and he's just gonna ride it out to the bitter end. And by not resigning, he is not admitting he's done anything wrong and this helps him with future employment.
Okay. Asshole.
I mean.
I mean, it's clear that he did this. That he was a participant in this conversation.
Oh, yeah, for sure, right? Everybody was. And regardless of,
Yeah.
Oh, the looks on my face, the thing to do is now that you have everyone's attention, it's, it's to resign, right? It's to say, my presence creates, it's too much of a distraction for the city to move on with its own business. And because I love the city, I'm gonna step aside, right? Deleon's point is if he's, if he steps aside and is replaced, whoever replaces him doesn't have voting power in LA city council because of whatever the rules are.
Yeah.
And, okay, um, fair enough. I don't know that this would be legal, but get somebody in to do that and you just cast their votes for them.
Oh.
Maybe.
I don't know how that would work.
I, well, it wouldn't, right? The thing, they have to do a referendum. They have to recall them. And I'm sure that's underway.
Yeah.
It's gotta be.
I hope so. I really hope so. So um, to judge these apologies, I mean, I'm just gonna say, we don't even need to go into it. These apologies suck. These apologies are, are, well, one, one didn't even really, I mean, he did apologize, but he didn't resign. And the other one apologized, but it was just bullshit. So I'm just gonna give them flat out zero to everything. The only thing they got right was they sort of made declarations of repentance and saying that, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I'm really sorry that I said this. But there was no other um, category that we look for in an apology present.
Well, I will say that um, zeros across the board, right? And it's not so much like there's no way to apologize for this, right? It's more the, I didn't do anything wrong.
Yeah.
Stance that everybody's taken. Um, but Nuri, okay, you did resign. Maybe you had to, but you did. So, okay, that's, that's nice. And for her apology, which she put out on Twitter and is pages long. Oh my God, her full apology is so, oh, yes. And it is, it is the most tone deaf.
This is self-serving.
Oh, geez, God. Yeah. It is with a broken heart that I resigned my seat. When I ran in 2013, I wanted to see a change in my community and fight for my neighbors. That is what it has been all along. No one expected me to win, but with the support of residents throughout the district, I ever came to, blah, blah, blah. For the families who can't make it out of poverty, struggling every day. And really what she should be saying here is for the Latino families that can't make it out of prob, poverty, right?
Right.
Struggling every day. You're the reason I get up in the morning. To the workers, the housekeepers, the nannies, to the people who get up to ride the bus to work in the morning. You've been the backbone of our city throughout this pandemic. And then we go on and on, the equality of women in the workplace, new homeowner campaign, all the things that she's done. To my constituents, serving you has been a privilege and one I don't give up lightly. You're the reason I live. To my colleagues, I've known you. You're my second family. To the city employees, you show up for work every day during the pandemic. I'll be cheering you on. Her family, right? She apologizes to everybody except the people she insulted. To my dad in heaven, siempre seres mi ente.
My God, really?
Oh, yeah. And then, and last, to all Latina girls across this city, I hope I've inspired you to dream beyond that which you can see.
Geez.
Gotten a lot of backlash for that. And then she concludes by saying, while I take the time to look inwards and reflect, I ask that you give. God damn it. Okay, hold on. While I take the time to look inwards and reflect.
I don't know what's gonna come here, but I'm really interested.
It's awful that I can't do this without laughing. I'm so dumb. Okay. I mean, this is legitimate. She says, while I take the time to look inwards and reflect, I ask. I ask that you give me space and privacy and a monkey.
That's awful.
Okay, so she does say, while I take the time to look inwards and reflect, I ask that you give me space and privacy. And then somebody added to my notes in parentheses, and a monkey. Because she called that guy's son a monkey. And so, um, yeah, I, I. I, I, I didn't laugh as much when I wrote it as I did until I had, and then it just wasn't that funny. It would have been funnier if I could have just done it without laughing. I need to go to the Amy Schumer School of Comedy and learn how to be a really solid mediocre comedian. All right.
It's funnier when you laugh.
To me, yeah, that was, that was great.
So, yeah, we hate Nuri Martinez. We're disgusted by the whole thing, by everybody in the conversation.
Point there. She, Kevin DeLeón should take a page out of her book, right? Just, just step down, dude.
Well, she had to resign. There was no way out for her. So she had to resign and Kevin DeLeón should resign too, I think.
Yeah, and, and it just goes to show how ugly all of, all of this is, but also just how much ugliness is out there in the world. I listened to a couple of podcasts that I was like, I, you know, get some different perspectives on this because I, I have mine, right? As Angelino, I see the harm that this does to the city. We like to think that we're the most multicultural, come-together city, right? Where we have coalitions that are built between the gay community and the black community, the black community and the Latin community and the Asian, right? And everybody's in it all together is, is how we like to think of ourselves and not, right? And what this does is, so given all the podcasts that I listen to, so I listened to some Latin ones, I listened to ones with black creators, right? Of course, everybody's horrified, but then we start to get into the differing, like, not so much what is this about, but just, just different perspectives. One guy, two New York guys have a podcast that is called Black and Brown, and one's Latino and the other's African-American. And they talk about the, whatever news article's happening, or whatever news story is happening that involves black and Latin communities and the, the conflicts between the two, right? So they look at racism between their two communities. And it got down to, well, New Yorkers, New York people of color are more aligned with each other than people on the West Coast, right? The West Coast is kind of all window dressing, but you never see a Latin guy with a black guy hanging out in LA, right? And like, I don't know which parts of LA you're going to, but like, I have to take you to a whole, like, there's a bar where that happens. So, so that, there was one guy, and I liked his take, which was, "Republicans let black people know that this is what we think about you," right?
Yeah.
"And you want to be on our, in our world? That's great, come on in, but you're on that lower rung and we're here, and that's just the way it is, and shut up about it," right? And so he was like, "That's the Republican." And then Democrats, and particularly progressive Democrats, are foxes and they're more sly about it. And it's all, "Oh, we all come together and we all support each other, but not really. We're always going to make sure that you're at the bottom." And I thought, well, that's an interesting perspective as well, right? I can see where somebody would have that viewpoint. Okay, cool.
I would think that maybe, maybe more it's that Democrats are less aware of their own racism. They like to think that they're, they're not racist, but they're, they're, they're racist anyway, even though they don't think that they are. It's still there and they, they haven't done the work that needs to be done.
Exactly.
To overcome it.
Even those moments where, where racism is just everywhere, it's hardwired into us. I just tripped over my own inner racist during this episode where I was like, if a white person had been in that room, everything would have been okay. Because they would have stood up and said, "This doesn't make me comfortable," right? Or, "I have to get some water."
Yeah, yeah.
Right? And so.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah, yeah, it's messy. And it may very well hurt progressive Democrats because it can be ta, well, for sure, it may hurt Latino candidates because it's going to reawaken all of those old conflicts of, you know, Latin people don't like black people, black people don't like Latin people, just when we thought we had gotten through all of that. Oh, we, now we hear what you have to say about us behind closed doors.
We hear what you really think, yeah.
Yep.
It's very disappointing, very, very sad. So, yeah, we give these apologies a zero. We give the people a zero. Everything gets a zero in this story.
And it's LA, my hometown.
Yeah.
I wanted to win.
I know there's good things about LA. We can't, we can't let that go untied, but, but yeah, nothing's perfect. So who's sorry now? Do you have an apology expected or do you have a who's sorry now?
I have a who's sorry now, and who's sorry now is James' former boss, a guy named who, when he took over a previous company while we were living in Los Angeles, moved that company to Dallas, Texas. And did it for money reasons. Oh, it's so much cheaper to have staff in Texas and it's so much easier to operate as a business in Texas, right? And, and, and he said that he had tried to move to California, but really it was the best for the business and in the, it was a benefit to the business to move, right? Three blocks from his house is where it was the best, yeah. And guess where he lived? Not in Dallas. He lived 45 minutes north of Dallas by car, not even on foot, right? So, yes, I, I'm owed an apology because that was completely and totally a lie and you did what was in your best interest. And guess what? The company closed. Not immediately, it took 10 years.
Wow.
Yep.
But it did. Wow.
So, that's, that's a shame.
Former.
Apology I'll never get, but.
Husband's former boss. All right.
I'm owed.
I have a.
What about you?
Apologies expected, and I'm going to laugh, and I shouldn't laugh. This is gonna be like you laughing at the monkey thing. But I, I'm, I'm gonna laugh. I'm just gonna laugh. But, okay, so four ex-workers at a Mississippi daycare are facing multiple charges of felony child abuse, two weeks after viral videos showed the adult staffers using a horror mask to terrify and discipline toddlers in their care. A fifth person faces misdemeanor charges for failing to report the incident. In one of the videos, a worker wearing a ghost face mask made famous by the Scream film franchise leans close to the children, growling and screaming as they wail. A worker points out which one of the children happened bad or good. "Are you being bad?" a masked daycare worker asks in the video as she crouches next to a crying boy. Laugh at this, this is terrible. "Do I need to take you out back?" she says. God, it's awful. That's an apology expected. This Mississippi daycare needs to apologize for this happening. This is the worst story.
Okay, there's video. How is there video?
Can you believe it?
I guess they have the video.
I don't know. They probably had a nest, an internal video thing like security or whatever, and, you know, you, every, everything's recorded these days.
But, well, as we now know, thank you, LA City Council, yes, everything is recorded these days.
Yeah.
That's awful. And it's awful.
It's terrible. Those poor kids.
Those poor kids are gonna develop the weirdest complexes about stuff. Who knows how that's gonna form in their brain?
For life. That's so bad. That's so bad. Why would you do that to a child? Oh, I can't even imagine it. That's why it's so funny to me is because I can't imagine it really happening.
Okay, so at this, I don't know when, I'm guessing they've done this recently, right? And so what I'm gonna reference is, I don't know when this thing happened, but did you see the video?
Yeah.
Oh. Of the daycare worker? In Iran?
Did I see the video?
No, no, no. Oh, okay, I, I, I get it. All right. I, there's a video and it's like somewhere in the Middle East, right? And it's a daycare and all the kids are seated in a big circle, and there's probably like 30 kids, right? And they're little kids, like these are three, four-year-olds.
Yeah.
And this person comes into the room covered over with a shawl, right?
Oh, no.
Can't see their face, and they've got a bag of presents, and they reach into the bag and they hand a present to a little kid. And the little kid takes the present, and the minute the kid touches the present, the person, the covered hooded figure picks a child up and runs away with them out of the room, right? And then comes back like 10 seconds later, offering more toys to the kids and more candy to the kids. And all the kids shake their hands up in the air and they're like, no, they don't want it, right? And they're scared, like, and I think one kid, after like 20 kids, one other kid takes the lollipop and is picked up and carried, carted out of the room. So I'll have to find that because it was on TikTok, I pretty think.
Wow.
Somewhere, could have been Twitter, TikTok or Twitter, it's the only two places I go. It was there or the other. And I'm wondering if the, if this, if the daycare in the US stole that idea from this viral video.
Oh, maybe. Well, that's all I've got for today.
Well, I will say, what? Oh, we're the 23rd. This will launch for the week of Halloween, and so.
Halloween is, is it on Sunday this year?
I should be able to, no, it's on Monday.
It's on Monday. So actually, we have one more podcast. But this is the one that will launch before Halloween, yes.
Yes, exactly. So.
But we'll record one more before, yeah.
Yeah.
Happy Halloween, everybody.
Happy Halloween, everybody. And goodbye.
Hey, go fuck yourselves.
No, you say, "Bye, cool cucumbers. Stay cool cucumbers."
Stay cool cucumbers.
Bye, cool cucumbers.
Bye.
Secret recording.
Thank you for listening to Apologies Accepted, the podcast.
You can find links to the articles and the sources in the show notes.
To submit an apology or find out more, visit us at apologiesaccepted.net where you can also find our merchandise.
We're on Twitter, @apologiesaccepted.
And on Instagram, @apologies dot accepted.
You can support our important work at Patreon forward slash Apologies Accepted.
And fuck Facebook.
Bye.
Bye.